Hello, welcome to the City Council's December 7 regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff and members of the public participating remotely, participating in chambers and in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal state and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs, Mayor Minto Park for 2021. I'd like to introduce the rest of the city council present and staff. Present in chambers is Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller, City Council Member Jen Woolison. Staff President, Staff President in Chambers is City Manager Scarlett Jordan Robinson, City Clerk Judy Heron, City Attorney Narra Doherty. City Council Members and Staff participating remotely is City Council Member Cecilia Taylor and Assistant City Attorney Megan Burke. With that, with roll call complete, we'll return to agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order or any requests for city council members under city council member reports. Okay, so first staff will be pulling L1 and out resolution number 6690, authorizing the city manager to execute purchase and sell agreement for a portion of 700 to 800 El Camino Real to support implementation of Minto Avenue pedestrian and bicycle rail crossing project. And and just so I can understand when it says staff is pulling out, what exactly?
But we are looking into some additional information and want to be confident about the accuracy of that information. And after that, we will bring it back to the city council.
So it won't be on the agenda for this meeting?
It is correct. We are pulling it from tonight's agenda.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks for that clarification. Is, are there any members of the city council that want to pull or modify any of the other agenda items? Vice Mayor Nash?
I'd like to pull J4 Sister Cities.
Okay, so J4, and in this case, this is just pulling from the consent calendar to discuss. All right, Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'd like to pull J8.
That's Councilmember Mueller.
What was the item that City Councilmember Mueller?
J3.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woolson, you don't want to be? All right, with that, those items will be pulled from consent calendar and discussed individually. Okay, cool. So with that, let me move that there. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to, to the closed session item. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment for closed session items D1 and D2.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, or item D2 Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you may press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session items, D1 and D2. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, the city council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following the closed session. We're anticipating closed session to be approximately one hour and 45 minutes. So that brings us back, I don't have my phone. Okay. I said an hour forty-five. All right, an hour. Okay, so the closed session is expected to last about an hour.
Mayor Combs, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. I'd like to reconvene the December 7 regular City Council meeting. I'd like to reintroduce City Council members and staff present in the City Council chambers. Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller, City Council Member June Willison, City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, City Clerk Judy Herron, Deputy City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Neeran Doherty, and I see Assistant City Manager Nick Bagaros also, who's in chambers. City Council members and staff participating remotely, City Council Member Cecilia Taylor. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, we ask that our city, anyone participating virtually as our City Council, to keep your webcam and microphone on when you are using it. For city staff, please engage your webcams and microphones when you are making presentations or responding to City Council questions. For members of the public who wish to speak on an item, after the mayor calls for a public comment on that item, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. That does conclude my introductions at this time.
Great. Thank you, City Clerk Heron. I'd like to introduce City Attorney Neeran Doherty to report out from tonight's closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no reporter action.
Thank you, City Attorney Doherty. Now we'll turn to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Again, this section of public comment is for items not listed on the business agenda this evening. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on items under agenda sections, the consent calendar, public hearings, regular business, and informational reports. So again, if you would like to make a public comment on any item listed under those portions of the agenda, we will separately call for public comment. City Clerk Heron, can you call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, for any member of the public who wishes to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening, Council. This is Lynn Bramlett. I live in Central Menlo, and I'm making a comment as a follow-up to the email memo report I sent you earlier this afternoon. I request that the City Council hold a Saturday study session in January on the topic of disaster preparedness. That would be before the annual goal-setting meeting. To my knowledge, the Council last discussed the topic August 28, 2012. This was sparked by the San Bruno PG&E gas pipeline, you know, that killed a number of people. And I have to say, when I re-watch, I've watched it several times, so many of the comments, the concerns brought up by the then Council are still the case today. So I think it's really timely. And related to that, in 2015, the then City Council established this work plan goal to create a community disaster preparedness partnership with citizens, businesses, and schools, utilizing existing agreement with fire district. Now, the fire district was not able to do this in 2016, as per their report, but we have the foundation for this today. But to continue, it needs city leadership and commitment. So there are a number of reasons to have a study session, and I think it's timely, especially with the county increasing its focus on emergency management. Emergencies, disasters, and catastrophes differ. To me, Menlo Park lacks a focus on disasters or catastrophe. We seem to focus on emergencies, which might last a few days. And it would be really important to get an update. National disaster preparedness policy and strategies have evolved greatly. Public safety is part of the city's mission statement, and it seems every year, people bring it up and are concerned about disaster preparedness. And the role of the emergency manager has also evolved, with some experts, in fact, most of them that I know of, believing that it belongs in-house. Finally, it would be timely to receive an update from the fire district's Office of Emergency Management. So since 2014, we have outsourced our emergency management role to the local fire district in return for $50,000 per year. The contract lapsed at the end of 2014, and the last quarterly reports were in early 2015. I believe the City Council and the public would benefit from receiving an update. There is an outside study underway. The report hasn't come out yet. I don't know how helpful that will be, given the process of that, the OEM department. I would do everything I could to help have objective speakers help with this. I hope you all consider this request.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Right. Thank you, city court Karen. With that, we'll move now to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continue to a later date. City Corcoran, can you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar items J one, adopt a resolution authorizing the city managers to submit a grant application with the California Department of Education to offset the operational costs. The Bell Haven Child Development Center. J two, adopt a resolution to continue conducting the city council and advisory body meetings remotely due to health and safety concerns for the public and authorize the use of hybrid meetings. J three, adopt a resolution to approve the through and left turn restrictions from southbound Garwood and northbound Merrill Street at Oak Grove. J four, approve and appropriate $10,000 for a grant to support the Menlo Park Sister Cities Association and ongoing Sister Cities program and authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement. J five, approve a modified design for the Sharon Road sidewalk project. J six, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance rezoning property at 1395 Chrysler Drive and 1005 through 155 Constitution Drive for the city stormwater pump station project. J seven, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application from the California Department of Parks and Recreation for the Haven Avenue Streetscape Project. Or J eight, eight, receive and file the general fund budget report as of October 31, 2021. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, they press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Tina Messalarian.
Yes, hello. Can you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I wanted to just to raise a brief comment about item J five, which is approving the modified design for the Sharon Road sidewalk project. I'm a Menlo Park resident, actually a parent of students at both Lontroda and Los Amigos. I'm the acting wellness chair on the PTA at Lontroda. So well, first in the subject, what what I would like to ask actually is if the council, when this item comes up for discussion, could consider a little bit of an additional very minor add to that project, which would be to have when the painting is being done on the on the surface level roadwork at the corner of Sharon Road and Altshul. If also the refurbishment at Sharon Road and East Ridge Avenue could be done at the same time, that is just refurbishing the paint markings on the ground on the roadway. We did a walk audit two years ago at Lontroda, and that was identified as an area of risk, a safety risk for students because cars don't seem to be stopping at that intersection as readily. All of that road paving has been worn away over time. And so by refurbishing, they're just the painting would would probably be a very good use of of safety funds that probably wouldn't add much to the current budget in terms of time or cost. And since we're going to be doing ADA modification at the Sharon Road and Altshul intersection, if East Ridge could also be considered for some paint refurbishment, that would really be excellent. We have a lot of vehicles that park perhaps in the intersection, moving vans and other other large vehicles that that just tend to park there. I think they just can't see the the road markings. So if council could consider that as well, that would be really much appreciated by the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items J one through J eight. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, city court Karen. I'm bringing it back to the we'll first responding to the public comment. Is there a need to actually modify the the new item just that staff can take note that there is a desire for the paint, the the striping at at East Ridge to be to be repainted or just can we take note of that and?
Well, so I'll look to Justin Murphy to help me out here, but I believe that we have a separate striping and painting budget that's miscellaneous, and we can use funds from that to do the work. So I don't think we need to modify the work that's directed tonight.
Okay. Is that a council member you?
So the I actually would support the restriping. And so my question is, well, we don't need to do it tonight. If we don't do it tonight, will it happen?
Yeah, and just to be fair, I think we're all in support of the restriping.
Justin Murphy, deputy C manager. Let's see. So I believe that we would first evaluate the situation, and if it's within the current contracts that we have, we could take care of that. It depends on whether or not it would involve any simply refreshing the the crosswalks.
I mean, that's what I understood the request that that, yeah, the 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 striping has has faded and it's not clear. And some some spots, I did not see it as as new stripy.
Right. Yeah. So we can look into that and then report back to the council in the in the new year.
So how about this? How about we look into it? And if it's going to happen, you know, how about we look into it? And then there's just a report back whether it happened or not?
Okay, yeah, part of it will be on the timing of of when it may happen. If we bundle it, maybe the weekend identify that will be done and let you know when it would be done.
Okay.
So it may take a little bit of time to actually mobilize to get the work done.
When we say in the new year, well, can we say before the end of February?
That we would report back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, and was the city attorney gonna chime in? Okay, good. Um, so I have J three, J four and J eight being pulled. And so to are we comfortable with a motion covering J one, J two, J five, J six and J seven? Does someone want to make that motion? Vice Mayor Nash?
So moved.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I'll second.
Right.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by city council member Willison to approve the consent calendar excluding items J three, J four and J eight. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Willison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, city court. Um, with that, then so we'll we'll start with the J three dot resolution number 667 to approve the through and left turn restrictions from southbound Garwood Way to northbound Merrill Street at Oak Grove Avenue. I can't remember who pulled this. Okay, council member Mueller.
Yeah, there was a letter that came in from Atherton that had concerns about the diversion of traffic and specifically the diversion of traffic toward Laurel Street that caught my eye. And I didn't see that there was disgust that was actually discussed in the staff report. I also didn't see that it went to the maybe I missed it, but that it went to the Complete Streets Commission. It did. So, okay, well, I still is there any response that staff may have to the Atherton letter?
So this is Hugh Vought, Assistant Public Works Director for Transportation, and thank you, Councilmember Mueller for that. We did. We did reach out to Atherton to let them know, and we did actually, you know, have this on a later agenda so that there was an opportunity for them to review the report and the work. And definitely appreciate that the concerns that they raised about traffic and certainly we we always want to be thinking about where the traffic that's going to be created goes to and how it travels. And in fact, this is sort of an attempt to address some of those issues. And maybe I would note that, you know, this is obviously a substantial new development. It's producing a lot of traffic, and we're not really talking here about the traffic produced by the development, just the traffic that's changed by this small change that we're proposing to make at these intersections. So there's a lot of traffic that's going to be moving around the city as a function of this development, but that's not really what we're focused on. The in terms of their concern specifically, the other things to note are that the access for the spring line development. So there are access points that get you to Glenwood and they get you to Oak Grove. But there is also access on El Camino Real, and a lot of traffic will be directly accessing from their garage to El Camino Real. And one of the questions they had raised was, I think, about the whether or not that access was available, and it is. And what we see from this, and I think the reasons why we wanted to bring this forward is that there are a lot of travel movements that take place in and around this area. You obviously have the Caltrain traveling adjacent. You have vehicles, you have bicyclists, you have people walking and biking. And so the left turn movements in particular out of the new Garwood Way as it's as it's finishing construction adds an element of safety, and our focus is really on those left turn movements in particular, and the number of additional conflicts. The concerns that they have about the impacts that that would have sort of as you make those turn into right turn movements potentially onto to Glenwood. And again, those might be right turn on Glenwood. They could also be right turns on to El Camino Real. Really focus in on what happens at the Glenwood and Middlefield intersection. And that intersection performs poorly right now, and that's certainly an issue. But the reason it performs poorly is that it's a two way stop. So the traffic on Middlefield is continuous, right? And the and only the traffic on Glenwood and the opposing street stop. And because of that, you know, the there's not, we're not really impacting that specific movement because we're really talking about people who are traveling, you know, roughly what we call south, right? Sort of parallels El Camino Real from there. So if they're coming out Glenwood, they'd be making a right turn, not a left turn. So they're not really adding to that sort of challenging movement in this case. Now, whether or not there's other traffic that's adding again is not really the kind of subject of of this change that we're making today. Certainly, we'd also don't anticipate seeing traffic on any of the other, some of the other streets that were mentioned. So Ensonal was mentioned, but this really wouldn't be anticipated to add additional traffic to Ensonal because, again, it's all going in the other direction. And in fact, there may be traffic that would use sort of other routes and get make its way back via Laurel or other streets back to back to Oak Grove and back to Ravenswood faster than it would to get up to Middlefield. So we definitely understand that, you know, these are concerns and that obviously we we want to minimize the the traffic impacts, but in staff's opinion, and 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 we did, in fact, present this to Complete Streets, and they agreed, and they actually encouraged us to look beyond just the Garwood Way, but also at Merrill Street across, which is essentially the same rough street now with the completion and look a little further, which we were able to do and do some additional analysis so that we could add that piece as well. So in our opinion, we really think that this provides a safer set of overall travel movements, and that's what we were focused on.
I appreciate it. You know, I've had concerns about this intersection and how traffic is going to be leaving and coming in and out of Spring Line and how it interacts with that small school for some time. And I think what's challenging for me is that I it feels this feels a bit piecemeal in terms of trying to create, trying to address the issue of traffic coming out of Spring Line and then how it moves down toward Middlefield and out of the area, both to and from Middlefield. I just since from the very beginning, I've been saying this is going to be an issue, especially with proximity to the kids and the bike lanes. And sometimes it's caused me to make make decisions that didn't wasn't always apparent that what I was worried about was safety. I am, I I would like to see a more comprehensive plan put together in terms of how we're dealing with traffic flowing from this project and how it intersects, how it leaves and goes down toward goes down toward Middlefield and and how it goes out of the area. Ideally, I'd like to try to keep this traffic as much as possible actually on El Camino candidly and and have it go through other other main thoroughfares in Menlo Park. Because I think it's so so I guess I'm just talking, but I'm 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 really, I'm I appreciate what staff's trying to do, but it feels it still feels piecemeal to me in terms that we don't really it's not, it doesn't feel like a complete plan of how we deal with that traffic coming from this project and what the intersection is going to be like with the pedestrians and the cyclists there. So it's not not critical of the work. I just feel like more needs to be done for me to feel really comfortable with it. Thank you.
And just so I'm understanding, Councilmember Mueller, more that would then negate any movement here with this this item or more that would be additive to this item after it was approved?
Yeah, the problem is so, and you know, the thing about the thing about traffic is that it's like water, right? And so if you do make one movement where there it has effects other where other places downstream, and if you don't look at the whole system, you get unintended consequences. And I think that, you know, to say, well, we've looked at Atherton's concerns and we're not as concerned about them. Actually, I am a little concerned about what's going to happen further downstream from from tinkering with this. I do see the effect of why we're doing that, but it seems like we haven't looked at the rest of the pipes and what happens as a result of it. And so that's my only, that's my only hesitation. I actually if this were one piece of a larger system that I understood how it all interconnected as it flows toward one on one, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with that. And I think that's the type of planning that needs to be done with this project. I actually have always been of the opinion that that it may be once this project opens that people are going to ask us to close one of these streets. So as it moves toward Ensmall, actually. But anyway, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold it up tonight because I think I can, I sort of feel that others might be just supportive of of going taking this first step, but I probably am going to abstain to make the point that I want to see more done here. So.
That's um, it's totally, totally fair. Um, and I, you know, I I hear those concerns. I'll just share minds is and I appreciate the 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 comments from from Mr. Locke. For me, it is just that like it 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 makes sense that we don't allow left turn out of there on on to Grove. Obviously, we've all been in that that intersection and then to expand, and it totally makes sense to also put in the same restrictions in connection with Merrill, but um, but accepting that, yeah, that this is is looking at a small, small piece of of, you know, impacts that are that are much larger. But I can see that the individual value of of restricting a left turn out of that 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 development sort of at the train tracks and you know, across from what has become the most popular restaurant in Menlo Park. If if not this portion of the peninsula. So and so that's why I would I would be supportive, again, not not opposed to some larger look depending on staff capacity. But but I am, I am, I am supportive of of moving forward with this. This was a restriction. I think I'm going to go to council member Willison.
Yeah, thank you. And I I do want to let people in Atherton and that live along Glenwood know that, you know, we we hear your concerns, and I think we all deeply care about, you know, pedestrians, walking and kids biking to school. The train tracks are terrifying. I have I have to cross them constantly because I live in District Three. My kids have biked along Oak Grove to school and it's just I think the train just adds the element that we can't take that risk. What I would like to see would be if if once the project opens and there is traffic going in and out, maybe return to council like within 90 days or something with a report on, you know, how the traffic's looking, if it's if it's meeting what the forecast was on where people are going and and any concerns or conflicts that we should know about. So if we need to reassess, but I'd like to have a proactive kind of check in if possible. So we can be really on top of it because of that high conflict area. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I agree with everything that's been said, including that this is a safety issue with the train track. So I think that it is a project that we need to proceed with. But now that we do have Mr. Loach in the traffic. to proceed with. But now that we do have Mr. Loach in the traffic area, and I know we've got another traffic engineer, so we are finally getting some robust staffing. Well, I don't know if robust is, but we are getting staff up in the transportation area. I would really like to see a look at traffic engineering for safety citywide and especially with all the bike and pedestrian interactions that we've hear about daily. It's really important to get on top of this. And I think traffic engineering is even more important than, or as well as enforcement, but it's really the traffic engineering that will be the answer for this. Thank you.
Right. So, City Manager.
Thank you all for expressing your comments tonight. So I think 90 days would be overly brief because we would want some time to observe and study and then some time to prepare the information for the council. So if we could say 120 to 180 days.
Yeah, I think whatever you need to do that. But obviously, if there's some major concern, we would ask, I think, that you come sooner than later.
Yes. Yes, understood. And I assume we're talking about after the project is actually occupied? Yes.
I mean, though, that brings up an interesting question because you'll have like the occupancy date, but then you actually won't have like, you know, complete occupancy probably to some, sometime later on, or at least something nearing complete occupancy on both the commercial side and the residential side.
So that's a very good point. Maybe we can work with the developer to identify metrics, like 75% of the residential units and 50% of the commercial units or something like that. And then we can, we'll share where we landed at the council.
Okay, right. So, um, okay. So does, I'm trying to think, do we make a motion here or do we just move on and see, move on to J4? Maybe I asked for a motion on this. Yeah, because, because, yeah, definitely we, I'll ask for a motion on this, this item. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I moved to adopt Resolution 6687 to approve the through and left turn restrictions from southbound Garwood Way and northbound Merrill Street at Oak Grove Avenue and direct staff to assess appropriate time to come back to council with an update on how the circulation is going.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wilson and a second by Mayor Combs to adopt Resolution Number 6687 to approve the through and left turn restrictions from southbound Garwood and northbound Merrill Street at Oak Grove Avenue to minimize anticipated safety concerns and direct staff to report back to the city council. Any further city council question or discussions? Seeing then by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Stay.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
The Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller abstaining. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, City Corrigan. Now, moving on to J4, approve and appropriate $10,000 for a grant to support the Menlo Park Sister Cities Association and ongoing Sister Cities Program and authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement. And so I think it was Council member Taylor, or no, Council, Vice Mayor Nash. I'm going to get it right, one of these things.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And I do support the Sister Cities. I'm concerned about setting a precedent with this grant, which was raised in honor CCIN by Mr. Lewis. Essentially, as he put it, "The big question is, can existing Menlo Park 503 organizations also apply for a $10,000 grant? As this seems to be the first of a kind, without a formal application and vetting process, will the floodgates open for other worthy established Menlo Park groups to also request a grant such as a Menlo Park Historical Association and Friends of the Library?" And I think that that is a good question. I don't know how to answer it.
So we do have a community grant program of which, you know, organizations can, can apply. Please go.
Oh, I'm sorry. That actually was a question that I've had is, why wasn't this especially, I understand that this originally came to us much earlier, but given that it now is December and we'll be making the, excuse me, decisions about the community grants, I wonder if this should not go into the community grant program.
So I'll chime in and have just sort of my thoughts in that, like, the, there are special circumstances here in that this organization is taking over a function that was part of the, the city. And, and I think if I remember correctly, Councilmember Nash, you were the, one of the people most advocating for this, you know, to be moved out of the city into a nonprofit. And, and, you know, and so that has happened and residents who were committed to this, committed to it continuing, have devoted a lot of time and, you know, some of their own money to seeing it, it go through. And so in that sense, I think it is, it is a different situation. And, and why I'm, you know, first, I don't see this as a floodgate situation because it's a very specific circumstance. And I wouldn't necessarily feel the need to say that, like, well, I think we're being unfair if this isn't sort of voted into the community grant program. Because again, like I said, this is a specific situation where residents saw the call and desire from city council to have this function moved out of the city, and they've, they've done that, right? And attempted to keep it going. And so that's why, you know, at the moment, I said in support of it, understanding, you know, some of Mr. Lewis's concerns, I do think that they are addressed about, by the specifics of the circumstance. And so I will, I will, 100% let you respond, but I did, I sort of cut it in front of the city manager. So I didn't know if there was something specifically she went to.
I think I would have made that point, only not quite so well. So thank you.
So I would just say unless someone else wants to add anything that, yes, given that this is seed money for a very specific reason of a group that's been moved out of the city to a nonprofit, I would go ahead and move to approve and appropriate $10,000 for a grant to support the Menlo Park Sister Cities Association. And I will let the city clerk repeat it, because I guess she will do it anyway. So not, not spend her time doing it, but really with the intent that this is a unique situation. Thank you.
I'll second that. Also second, you need that, yes, it's a very unique situation.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by Mayor Combs to approve and appropriate $10,000 for a grant to support the Menlo Park Sister Cities Association and ongoing Sister City Programs and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement, a grant agreement with the association. Any further city council question or discussion?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. Yeah, I also see this as a, a launching of it. I did notice in their budget, they are also hoping to receive $10,000 from us next year. And I just wanted to say that I think we'll have to make that decision next year and encourage the Sister City new group, which is much appreciated for the, those who are starting it, starting it to rise, to fly sooner than later, because this is a really unique circumstance that we're funding. So it'll have to come back next year. There's no expectation that this is an ongoing thing.
Yeah, just quickly, totally agree. And I would expect future asks to then go through the community grant process. Councilmember Mueller.
The only thing I would add is the association is a nonprofit outside the structure of the city. And so there's no city oversight of what's actually taking place. And so within the grant, I'd want to make sure that it's very clear that then when the city represents itself to organizations outside of Menlo Park or anywhere in the world, that it would represent itself as or as the Menlo Park Sister City Association, but not a representative of the city of Menlo Park. And I think that has to be pretty clear within the paperwork that we provide to them since there is no city oversight of, of any of the members. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment or questions by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
So do we have what I just indicated as an addition to the motion?
Including that there is no city oversight of Sister Cities Association?
That this, that the Sister City Association is not to represent itself as, as acting on behalf of the city of Menlo Park.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me see. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my vote is yes.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Corrigan. Moving to J8, receiving and filing the general fund budget report as of October 31, 2021. Think Councilmember Taylor will this one?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have a, a couple of questions. The first is just with receiving and filing the general fund budget report as of October 31, 2021, when will the next one come before us if we, if we approve or consent to receiving and filing this one?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think that's hard to predict right now, but it would be sometime post-January, maybe February. Because we would be looking to, towards doing a half-year report, but Mr. Pagaros is going to help me out here. So I'll defer.
Thank, thank you, City Manager Jerome Robinson, Nick Pagaro, Assistant City Manager. To answer Councilmember Taylor's question, the city's practice has, has historically been a quarterly report, which typically is two months after the end of the quarter, just given the amount of time it takes to close the financial records as well as prepare the report. There are two sort of aspects of the quarterly financial reports that are a little more complicated and that's at year end, at both at year end and mid-year. And so mid-year, which is, which would normally happen in February, typically happens in January as we look at the mid-year budget adjustments to reconcile where we were through the first six months of the year and where we expect to be in the last six months of the fiscal year. And then at the final, at the end of the year, June 30, we strive to transmit a report in, in September, but we actually issue our final report in the December timeframe. And that's the report that's, that's audited by the city's independent auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros. I have a, maybe one or two follow-up questions. And the, the reason I'm asking about when the next report comes, there's questions that I have on it, and I don't think that now's the time to ask. And so by receiving and filing it, does that mean that my questions would have to wait to be addressed the next time a report comes out?
I think it's always questions that come from city council members offline or in the open meeting. We do our best as staff to address those as quickly as possible. The report that's before the city council this evening to receive and file is, is effectively done. And we can, Councilmember Taylor, if you reach out to interim Administrative Services Director Teresa De La Santa to communicate your questions, to the extent that we can incorporate those into the quarterly report, you will. But it's not knowing the questions, it's a little difficult to, to commit to that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros. I appreciate your response. And my, my last question is, and I did send this in an email earlier, is the estimated time where the printed copy of the budget is available. OpenGov is nice to use, but you can't print from it. So it makes it hard to look at Attachment A and Attachment B at the same time if one is a digital copy and the other is, you can print.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. The OpenGov, to answer your first question, the printed budget, actually this evening I'm making my final sort of formatting edits to it, and we will have it early next week to the city council, if not late this week by PDF, but printed will take a couple of days. And, and so I don't have a timeline on that. With respect to comparing paper documents to OpenGov, I'm not sure that that's necessarily something that will ever be easy. OpenGov is an incredibly dynamic and robust reporting tool that can slice and dice cities' finances in ways that we've never been able to do before. And we're incredibly excited to have that tool. However, to put side by side is going to be difficult because we, the presentations, just the formatting in general are entirely different. The data is the same, but the, but the formatting is different. So I don't think it's necessarily something that, I don't think that's a gap that we'll be able to close anytime soon to be able to print, to compare the print version of something to what's on OpenGov.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros. Mayor Combs, I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. And just, Mr. Pagaros, when you say the printed copies, that's for the council? And then, correct me, I, Councilmember Taylor, in your earlier request, was there some comment about printed copies for the public too?
Yes. Well, I didn't say that earlier. I sent that actually in the email, but yes, for the public too.
And so when does, do we have, have we historically provided printed copies to the public? So where, and do we have like a, in a general ETA on when and where those copies would be?
Yes. So we do provide copies to the library for public review. And on occasion, when, when we do receive a request for the budget, we will provide a copy, we have extra copies printed. The arrival time for the public's view is the same time that the city council would get it, which is, I mean, I'm talking literally the printed paper version of the document, which will formally trend, the document will formally be transmitted to the printer either late this week or early next week. So whatever the turnaround time is to print the glossy document with the special binding is something, and clearly dependent on how many copies we request, will determine when we can have that on file. I'm comfortable saying that it'll definitely be before the holiday closure, most likely the third week of December at the latest.
And just so I'm, when you say a copy in the library for review, that's like, that you can't take out. So you, you put one copy in the library or, or, I just want to, again, to Councilmembers, to the other point, she did email these questions earlier on, and I was on that thread. And so I just want to, again, and it seems as though, at least part of her concerns, certainly Councilmember Taylor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was this accessibility of the printed copy for the public? I guess based on her sense that there has been this desire to have it. And so I just want to make sure we now lend to like, like, are there multiple copies? Is there one copy? And is it just the main library or is it the main library in the Bellhaven branch and how that all works?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, right now, the budget is not available in paper, so we can't provide it in any location or to anyone. When it does get printed, it will go to both branch libraries at the council's direction. If you'd like for us to put multiple copies, we are more than happy to do that. With respect to, yes, I'm sorry if I, if I missed any other part of your question.
Okay, no, no, that, that's fine. And so to Councilmember Taylor, is, is there a desire to have a, a specific number of the, you know, physical budget available in the libraries are, is a historic one, one for review, you know, comport with, with your desires in this situation?
I appreciate the question, Mayor Combs. And I, I'm assuming the past practice has been to have, has been to have one available. And I'm not sure if someone can come in and they have to use it at the library or they're able to actually check it out and then return it. But two copies, I guess, at each location would be helpful.
Okay. And I think that, that's certainly reasonable. Okay, yeah, and I, I think that, that, that's certainly reasonable. Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Nash?
Is it possible to have a printable copy online? I know that, that, for example, the CAFER is not printable.
Um, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nash, I don't, I don't know that I under- that, I, I'm, I have to check. I, it's, I'm, sorry, uh, I am unaware that the CAFER is not printable.
The CAFER is not printable. You have to take screenshots if you want to print it.
Okay, now that's a security setting that we should, that there's no reason why we should not, that what, that we should entirely be able to fix that. There's no reason why the, the website should not allow for a download printed copy of either the budget or the CAFER.
That'd be terrific, thank you. If you could look at past copies too, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peceros. And you were done, right, Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and so do we, we need to vote on this, right? Um, does someone want to make a motion? Or I'll, I'll move. Does someone want a second? Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Willison to receive and file the general fund budget report as of October thirty first, two thousand twenty one. Any future, or any further city council question or discussions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Judy, I had, actually had a quick question. Do I need to include in the motion just the follow-up? With the questions that I have?
Uh, were these the questions that Nick had recommended you reaching out to Teresa for?
Yes.
No, you don't need to include that in the motion.
Okay, thank you. My vote is yes.
Appreciate that. City Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, City Corcoran. But that will move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Uh, the public hearing is a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. K one, public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution adopting required findings and authorizing city to execute an energy service contract pursuant to Government Code Section four-two-one-seven and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a final agreement with NG Services U.S. Inc. to procure, install, operate, and maintain clean energy infrastructure for the Menlo Park Community Campus Project in an amount not to exceed five-point-seven-two million to procure and install clean energy infrastructure equipment and, uh, appropriate five-point-seven-two million from the unassigned funds in the general fund to procure and install clean energy infrastructure and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Here to introduce the item is, uh, Sustainability Manager Rebecca Lucky.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and council members. Rebecca Lucky, the Sustainability Manager for the city. Thank you, Mayor Combs, for that longest agenda title probably ever. So I am going to be walking through the presentation tonight on the purchase of clean energy infrastructure for the Menlo Park Community Campus Project. And as Mayor Combs eloquently stated the agenda title, I'll try to summarize it, but the recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution that's an Attachment B of the staff report.
Just the interruption, but can you open it up into a full-screen presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Is it full screen, everybody?
Perfect, thanks.
All right, thanks. So the, the resolution, um, is, is what's recommended tonight in Attachment B of the staff report and to appropriate funds. Uh, the resolution, just to summarize, is authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with NG Services U.S. Inc. to design, construct, operate, and maintain a solar photovoltaic, um, plus battery storage system. And just a, a little bit of background on that, uh, what we're looking to place on this site is, um, enough solar, um, infrastructure to operate the building during the day, but also, um, store extra solar energy in a battery to be used, um, during, um, evening hours and nighttime to reduce operational costs and also to reduce, uh, and eliminate the need for a diesel generator during an emergency, um, power shut-off where the community center might be, might need to be used. So that was a, a big component the council about a year ago wanted to, to look at and pursue. Uh, in addition, we, uh, also were looking at a solar thermal pool heating system. So, uh, as, as we're all aware, uh, the buildings in Menlo Park need to be, new buildings need to be all-electric, which includes the new pool, um, and we're going to be using heat pumps for that, and the solar thermal pool heating system helps to reduce that electrical load further and, and save on cost for the city um, by using, uh, piping underneath the solar panels to heat the water and circulate it. The project also includes twenty-seven electric vehicle charging spaces. The total cost for the project is five-point-two million, and this was anticipated and reported to council in the study session in October. Um, there, there was a range, it was between four-point-seven to five-point-two million. Um, the, the terms and the design elements were still being finalized, so the final number arrived on, um, tonight is five-point-two million um, for all of this, all of the features of the clean energy infrastructure. So the budget also, budget request also includes an additional ten percent contingency of about a half a million dollars for a total, uh, project budget of five-point-seven-two million dollars. The other part of the, the resolution is to make a finding that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and, uh, again, to appropriate five-point-seven-two million dollars from the general fund to, to budget for this project. And I'll walk through, um, these findings shortly. So, um, the public hearing is being held, um, accordingly to Government Code forty-two-seventeen, and it's, it's a, um, it's a code that really provides flexibility for a local agency to find the most qualified vendors to execute energy contracts, expedite the ability to find a vendor, and, and other aspects. It, so essentially it authorizes a public agency to utilize any procurement process it deems necessary to, to contract for energy services if its government body determines at a regularly scheduled public hearing, such as this one, that the anticipated cost for energy services from the project will be less than the anticipated cost of energy in the absence of, of the energy contractor, in this case, the project. So we did go through a procurement process. Uh, it started very early this year. Um, the city hired Optimi Inc. Um, they, uh, were selected to manage a procurement process on behalf of the city. So they diligently worked with staff at a, the meta team and the MPCC Electrical Engineering Team to issue a request for proposals in the spring. It also included holding a pre-bid webinar, answering the technical questions associated with that. Um, Optimi's also assisted staff with negotiating the key technical terms in the agreement and provided third-party analysis on cost and anticipated savings, um, from the bids that we received and with the selected vendor NG. I do also want to highlight that Optimi did help the city back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen in procuring, uh, a power purchase agreement of solar on four city facilities, uh, and so they are well-versed in this area, um, and used by many cities, um, to help with procurement processes such as these. And so as, as I mentioned, NG was selected after extensive review by staff, Optimi, the Facebook team, and the MPCC Electrical Design Team. Substantial key terms of the agreement have been negotiated, and they're provided in attachments D, C of the staff report. So there are some remaining elements under review, uh, but they are, um, not going to affect the price or the savings as currently provided in the staff report. So just a breakdown of the cost for this project. So for the solar, um, battery storage microgrid, that's the highest cost item. It's at three-point-six-eight million dollars. The next would be solar thermal pool heating at one-point-one-six million, and then the EV charging at, um, point-three-point-three-five million for a total, again, of five-point-two million for the project. And then there is typically a contingency for unforeseen circumstances of ten percent. Um, so that's about a half a million dollars. Brings us to the total budget for the project at five-point-seven-two million. So I do want to, uh, also note that since October, since we brought this to council in the study session in October, the costs have been reduced for the solar, uh, thermal pool heating by ten percent and over twenty percent price reduction for the EV charging stations. And so, um, staff, Optimi and NG were able to, to negotiate and, um, find alternatives or, um, just be able to find, uh, better sources for these products and design features. And as I mentioned, the contingency funds, um, you know, are used for unforeseen circumstances. They do need to be vetted and approved by the city before, um, being pursued. There are, uh, remaining design elements for the carport, um, that are, are still being finalized, so it's, it's anticipated that some contingency is going to be used for that. So the, one of the findings you, you need to make under the forty-two-seventeen is, will there be any savings as a result of this compared to the business-as-usual case, which is using a standard PG&E service, um, and, and through Peninsula Clean Energy? Um, so this graph on the left shows on the red dotted line what the business-as-usual scenario is, and the other two lines shows, you know, if we use the full contingency, where the savings will lie versus a no contingency. And also want to note that this includes the operation and maintenance costs for the microgrid, the EV, um, for the microgrid and the solar thermal. And the payback is expected to be achieved between sixteen and, and eighteen years of the project. So the EV charging is, is not included, um, in this forecast because EV charging is an added demand. It's, it's, uh, it's anticipated to always, it's, it's anticipated to be there as a increase to, to the energy load and the energy demands, whether or not you have the microgrid there. Um, so that's, that's not, um, part of, of this, this forecast, but the costs are expected to be recovered using, uh, the, the city's, the city council-approved, um, fees for electric vehicle charging that are going to be included in the, um, next master fee schedule update. So the savings between year twenty, twenty-five, and thirty ranges, um, at year twenty, which is the life, the typical life of the project, but a lot of, uh, the elements and the infrastructure do last up to thirty years. So the city can anticipate a savings of between, um, six-hundred-thousand dollars all the way up to, um, six-point-eight-seven, um, million over a thirty-year period, depending on how much contingency is used. Uh, and so again, the greater savings really hit, um, you know, after we've recovered the full cost of the project and experience the savings after year sixteen through eighteen. And I do also want to note that the savings doesn't include, um, doesn't include the associated savings with, uh, not using an emergency diesel generator as well. So there would be even greater savings of not having to operate and maintain a diesel generator on-site for emergencies. So the other finding that the city council needs to make is, is a SEQA finding. So on January twelfth, the city council, um, found the MPCC project, the Menlo Park Community Campus Project to be exempt, um, under replacement of existing fil- facilities. So it's, it's basically, uh, the SEQA allows exemptions for new facilities that are replacing existing facilities, and this would include any related elements to the project, such as installing the renewable microgrid, the solar thermal pool heating system, and the EV charging. So the appropriation of the five-point-seven-two million from the general fund, so this is for the design and construction of the, the microgrid, uh, EV charging and solar thermal, um, pool heating system, it's not included on the slide, but it is, is part of it. And the operating costs will be included as part of the annual operating budget approval, and any savings will be allocated to the general fund, uh, to recoup those, those costs. So the city does maintain a sufficient unassigned fund balance of, um, at this time, six-point-nine-nine million. So the remaining balance would be one-point-two-seven million for the council to, to use at its discretion for other projects and priorities. So just circling back, the recommendation, um, before the council tonight is to authorize a city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with NG for, um, the microgrid, the solar thermal pool heating, and the twenty-seven electric vehicle charging spaces, uh, with a budget of five-point-seven-two million and to appropriate that from the general fund and find the project exempt from, from SEQA. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention all of the, um, team liaisons for this project. There are so many to, to mention in here, but they're the ones that are available here to answer any kind of technical questions that I may not be able to answer include Justin Murphy, our deputy city manager, who really stepped into this project after the departure of our, um, Assistant Public Works Director. And we also have Joan Cox, uh, as well, who's a supporting city attorney from BSW Law, who specializes in contracts like these and has been really supporting us through this, um, last, um, couple of months and also in the beginning giving us advice. Uh, and we have Byron Pactor from Optimi as well here to answer any technical questions regarding the savings, um, analysis done. And John Paul Jewell from NG is here as well, and, um, Phil Siddles from Meta and Craig Collins from PAE Engineers. They're not, I don't, I don't believe they're here, but they were certainly instrumental in, in helping, uh, in developing the RFP, answering these technical questions and just being very responsive and also heart, heartwarming as well. And that concludes my presentation and happy to answer any, any questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing, City Corcoran, and call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item K one, public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution adopting required findings and authorizing the city to execute an energy services contract pursuant to Government Code Section four-two-one-seven and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a final agreement with NG Services U.S. Inc. to procure, install, operate, and maintain clean energy infrastructure for the MPCC project in an amount not to exceed five-point-seven-two million dollars to procure and install clean energy infrastructure equipment and appropriate five-point-seven-two million from the unassigned funds in the general fund to procure and install clean infrastruc- energy infrastructure and finding the action exempt from SEQA. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening again, Lynn Bramlett, District Three. I'll start with a few questions, and the first is, what is the Bellhaven community involvement in this project? I mean, I heard about the team liaisons, but I didn't hear about any representation from the community who, who could speak about this and the priorities. So how were they involved? And then I'm also curious if, if the city has formally changed the center's name. I remember going to meetings where the name was extremely important to the community, and I heard that no final decisions would be made, but yet it seems as though, uh, in a way, it may have been in a de facto way. It's an awful lot of money. I'm, I'm concerned about giving the authority to the city manager for that amount of money to, to anybody, really, not her personally. Please don't take this personally, but I think it would be better to have a negotiating committee that included some community members. And I have to ask about the decision for the EV charging stations. Um, you know, how many residents in Bellhaven have electric cars? And then was any thought given to the community and what they might need more of? For example, the seniors, some of them might be using sleep apnea machines. What if the power went out? What if they need medication storage? So I, I, you know, I just want to raise some general concerns because that community, you know, I'm an outsider, but having, you know, gotten to know the people there, it, and, you know, seeing what I have, it's a community historically been marginalized, people coming up with ideas for them. And so I think when you have a case like that, it's really important to bend over backwards to include them in the process, and I, I just don't see that here. So I'm, I'm hoping there'll be some information, you know, giving, giving all these details as part of the discussion. you know, giving, giving all these details as part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for public comment on item K1. Looks like we have one more hand raised. Allison.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well said, by the way, Ms. Bramlett. I apologize. I am a newbie to all of this. And I thought that earlier when there was a motion being made for the J things, that it was just about taking out the pieces. I thought, I didn't know that all of those pieces were being approved. I thought that there were going to be specific presentations on each of the different items up tonight. So I missed saying something and I was wondering if you'd kindly permit me to say that now.
Yeah. What item did you want to make comment on?
Thank you so much. It's item J5, which is the Sharon Road project.
Appreciate that. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And also thank you to everyone involved who worked together to find the middle path and common ground. We have a nice, long lead period to get this project done in a thorough, yet timely manner. We have the opportunity to demonstrate that Menlo Park can plan ahead effectively. There are residents of Sharon Road and its immediate vicinity who are disabled and who have life-threatening illnesses. The pandemic has confined many of us to our homes, our sanctuaries. This Sharon Road project isn't about a broken water main in the middle of the night or any other urgency or emergency. I ask you councillors, Ms. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, please hold this project to the same regulations to which residents are held regarding noise and construction hours and days from engineering to contractors to subcontractors. Please give us all as much peace as possible. It means so very much to our qualities of life and for the safety of all those who utilize our little stretch of road. Thank you and may the peace of the season be with you. Happy holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison. Our next speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, council and staff. Pam Jones, resident of Menlo Park, Bellhaven neighborhood. I have the same concerns as Lynn Bramlett and she put it very well. I knew nothing about this before it was on the agenda and at minimum, out of common courtesy, the residents should be involved because this project started from within Bellhaven. This was an inside job where residents worked with, within Facebook in order to get the $45 million to build this facility. I'm also concerned that we are losing the fact that this center is replacing what we already had. And yes, it will be state of the art and it will be wonderful, but to have it as a designation point is concerning. And when you take steps to do something around the community center, you need to involve the community. We have knowledge when it comes to, and expertise when it comes to doing the electrical grid piece. So for anything in the future, I hope that we are included. No, I ask that we are included. And that also if there is a subcommittee from the council, they too should be included. And this is not about trust with what the staff is doing. And I appreciate that. Deeply grateful for all the hard work you've done with putting this together. But it's also a matter of keeping us informed in the loop and a part of the process. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Final call for public comment on item K1. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Great. Thank you, City Corcoran. And thank you, everyone who provided public comments. And to Allison, totally no worries. We were all at one point newbies to this process. And sometimes forget how inside baseball it can all seem. So glad that you were able to share your comments. And yes, as a general rule, the city does have to follow its own rules and procedures when it comes to construction. But certainly if, as this project kicks off, you have some sense that that is not happening, then you certainly should reach out to all of us and let us know about that. Right, I'm now going to bring it back to the dais for any, for clarifying questions and comments. I did want to briefly, in response to some of the public comment, say though, that like, I do think it is worth mentioning that this project is, its genesis was with council, right? And council is the one that has given direction. Council is the one who has desired this. This is not staff. This, this is all councils. So if there's some sense that certain parties weren't involved or weren't involved enough, then are that the direction that staff has gone with has not involved. Again, all stakeholders said it should, then again, I would say that the blame should roll back to the council because as I see this project, it is council acting on, excuse me, staff acting on the direction and the priorities that they got from, they got from, from, from the dais. And so I do want to sort of, just in a general sense, say that. And then with that, I will, I will, I see, I think council member Mueller's like is on, so I'll go to him for clarifying questions, comments.
I was just a little puzzled by the comment that the 27 charging stations wouldn't be utilized by the community in Bellhaven when you're looking at a structure that we're talking about. Will have over a 30-year lifespan in 2035. California state government's going to require all cars sold in the state to be electric, which will be only not, you know, 2035 is only 14 years away. So you're talking about 15 years after that, 16 years after that. There won't be a car sold in the state new that's electric, that's not electric. And about, so the seven-year lifespan for a car, eight-year lifespan for a car, near the end of this, I don't think there'll be very many cars on the road that aren't electric anymore. So I just, I actually was pretty, that, that sort of, I just didn't, I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong or missing something, but to have a public, to be building public infrastructure looking toward the future like that is something that we just haven't had in Menlo Park yet to that extent. So and have a nose that once we have to start moving to convert to that, there isn't going to be the opportunity like we have now to put so many in. But if that's, I mean, and candidly, you know, I'll be looking to council member Taylor's guidance and all of you, but if this is something the community doesn't want, if they truly don't want this project, it's a lot of money. It is, it is a lot of money. I mean, this would be one of the most advanced clean energy projects, I think on the peninsula for a community center. But if the community doesn't want it, we don't have to do it. So I'd be very curious to hear all of your thoughts, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not wed to it. I was excited about the project, but certainly if people don't want it, well, there's other things we can spend money on.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And just like, is it possible that we cannot do it? Like, is that, is that an option? Or has that horse kind of left the barn? And Vice Mayor Nash.
Well, I think Justin Murphy, who's really been heading up this project, should try and respond to that, but anything is possible. It's really going to go to what the time delay would be and, and what adjustments would be, would need to be made to the design. So and Justin can give more detail than that, but this would be a very big pivot point. This, the council's previously given us direction on this. And but yeah, obviously that's the direction the council wants to go.
Sure. The vice mayor is going to chime in before Mr. Murphy.
I just, while this particular negotiation has not, there has been some possibly missed communications. I think that overall this has been a part of the project, which was well discussed in front of council, with council and also the working, the community working group was not set up yet, but I believe that there was some community involvement and certainly a desire to have this be a sustainable building. And as given that the Bellhaven neighborhood has a very significant air quality issue, this is what will be very beneficial to have a clean air, clean energy infrastructure system. And I believe that I'd be very interested if there is concern about that because I think that this really is pushing the envelope and really sort of leading the charge in order to benefit the health of the community. And it is something where it's very beneficial not to have the diesel generator involved, which requires, I believe, weekly to monthly, anyway, regular regular exercising of the system to make sure it's working, which puts pollutants into the air. It's something, and also having the diesel fluid around, it's something which really in having a, one of the biggest polluters is the, with the pool system and to have a heater that's all electric and to be using the solar panels. This actually is just really, very honestly, seems to me that it's, it's an extremely beneficial system to the community, especially given that we wanted a pool that we are really doing, the city is doing everything possible to make it as clean as possible and not to contribute to the air quality issues that are there.
Mr. Mayor, mayor's spot. Vice Mayor Nash, I completely agree with you. I don't, I don't disagree with anything you just said. That's why I was a little puzzled by the reaction. So, but like I said, I probably will defer to council member Taylor, but I see all those benefits you see as well.
Mr. Murphy, did you still want to add something? Or I guess the idea was just some sense of like, in theory, we could pivot here and go with not this, this project as when it comes to sort of the electrical infrastructure, but that there would be some time delay. Are you going to tell me something different? That it's really not possible to pivot?
No, no, that, let's see. So first off, Vice Mayor Nash did a good job identifying a number of issues that were, were the justification for this. My understanding is that if the council decided to drop this from the project, that it's actually, to me, and I'll defer to others may chime in, it's feasible to drop it, almost like right this second type of thing. What would be extremely challenging, challenging is changes to it or delays or trying to figure it out later, any of that I would not recommend. So I'd recommend either moving forward or abandoning it, but not something necessarily in between. And when I say moving forward, you know, in near term, not, not something that gets reconsidered in a few months.
Okay, thanks for that. And I'll sort of just chime in and sharing similar sentiment as council member Mueller. Like this certainly wasn't, you know, this, this wasn't what I was advocating. I was, when we first heard this, was sort of shocked about how much money it was. But there, there were others, as I remember on council, who were really very much interested in, in, in us sort of really going all out as far as what was possible when it came to, you know, this technology with micro grids, with solar panels. And so, and that like, and that to the issue of this is a community that has not been historically given as much resources as other parts of the community and that we should in this instant do all we could to make sure that, that we got not only sort of a top quality project, but a project that leaned into the future. And so based on that, I was willing to go along with what I thought was a very high, high dollar figure. And so again, my concern is that like if we're, you know, if there is some sense that the community hasn't been engaged, then, then, then what's, since again, we're talking about infrastructure here, like, right? It becomes about engineering and experts, like, right? And, 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 and so I don't know the extent to which the community engagement is going to like have some immense value in that part of it. The community engagement is, do you do it or not? Like, is this the value exchange you want to engage in? And that's where I think that the community engagement is valid. And if we've missed that part, then certainly let's, you know, make sure it's there. And if it's not there, then, then let's, let's, let's pivot. But I don't know if, if like the value of community engagement about how you implement this microgrid. Because at that point, it's, it's the experts. So council member Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is actually, it also seems fiscally responsible to do this project. So while it is a lot of money upfront, what we heard from Ms. Lucky was that at a minimum, it's going to save us more than a half a million dollars and it could save us over $6 million. So if I, if I was hearing from the public, you know, specific concerns about the noise of the pool heater or or other things that would be more concerning, but I'm trying to, what I'm hearing more is about the process. And I think we can learn from that as we learn every time we meet and do anything that it's a reminder and we need to be more upfront and proactive about that. And I'm not accusing anyone. It's just something, it's a constant practice that we need to build into the way we do business. But as the, the value of the project, I don't necessarily, I don't see any like inequity in this. I actually see the charging stations, which isn't actually a very big cost, being a huge benefit to the Bellhaven community. When we're looking at electrical vehicle, vehicle charging and equity, we're looking at multifamily units a lot, which is not the composition necessarily of the Bellhaven neighborhood, but just the access to charging. And I know families in my neighborhood that actually sometimes park at Burgess and charge up here. So having a nearby fast charging system, I think is a huge amenity, as council member Mueller was saying, as more and more vehicles become electric. So I see this as just a heads up that we need to remember our community outreach and be really mindful about that. But I'm, I'm eager to get going with this project also, like I said, because it's the fiscally responsible thing to do. But given all that, I am very eager to hear from council member Taylor and if she's heard concerns from her community. Otherwise, then obviously that would be a huge factor.
Very totally frank, council member, she raised her hand and everyone waits with bated breath. Sorry to put you on the spot. But we'll, we'll go to you now.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have a question for Ms. Lucky and it's regarding the EV chargers, just a clarifying question. Thank you, Ms. Lucky. My question is, I received an email about a PCE grant for EV chargers and I just wanted to know if the city was applying for the grant for this project.
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of programs out. Some of them are already oversubscribed, so there's not grant funds available. And we, we're looking into all those aspects. Part of the agreement that's in attachment C includes having NG work with PCE on a program that they have for discounted EV charging stations. So PCU is able to kind of work in bulk with EV charging manufacturers to get discounted pricing. So that that's what we do have at this moment. And we're certainly always exploring, like, if, if there is rebates available or, or funds available to kind of roll that into it. And we can strengthen that language too as well in the, in the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. My next, well, I'm not sure if this is a question or just a comment. The process noticing was something that I was concerned about with the public hearing, not knowing about it until it was on the agenda. And I know that this was noticed, but it, in the future, it needs to be noticed in a citywide circulating newspaper or something where it's printed in a newspaper, it's printed on a flyer and it's sent out electronically. So that was where I had the, the biggest concern was just noticing. And then also language access, that we start providing information about public noticing in both English and in Spanish. And if there's another language that has been requested, implementing that as well. And if there's another language that has been requested, implementing that as well. So my main concern was around the noticing of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
You're, you're very welcome. I have a question for the deputy city manager, Mr. Murphy, and just about timing. I am actually supportive of one part of the request as far as the findings, adopting the required findings, but I would like to continue the second part as far as authorizing to negotiate the contract. And I just wanted to find out, Ms. Lucky, if you know the answer to this, just thinking about the timeline and how that would shift it a little bit by doing so.
Great, thank, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. So, yes, I believe time, time is of the essence in terms of, as you know, the, the overall project is under construction, but we do have some flexibility. So if this evening, the city council was interested in, you've conducted the public hearing, I think there's just a couple of other procedural things that you'd want to make sure that get covered this evening about the public hearing and then adopted findings about the government code section 4217 and the SEQA finding. And if those could be taken care of tonight, that would be progress throughout this two year process to date. There's been a number of steps that we've gone through. So whenever we can make progress in steps, that's, that's helpful. I would, if you're able to accomplish that tonight, then I would suggest looking at the, kind of a date certain for, for coming back to the council. And the sooner we could do that, the better. So as you know, it's, we're getting near the end of the calendar year. We're attempting to bring this under contract this, this calendar year, if at all possible. So I would, I would suggest trying to hold out some hope that we could get this wrapped up in front of the city council, the next, next Tuesday's council meeting. So that would be my, my recommendation, if at all possible.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, Murphy, excuse me. I'm, I'm actually comfortable making a motion to do that unless there's more council discussion needed.
I'm told I need to close the public hearing, so we certainly need to do that. So the public hearing is officially closed. I do see Councilmember Mueller's light and so want to acknowledge him. And then Councilmember Taylor, I'll, I'll come back to you for a motion.
I did have a question about one thing I didn't see, and I don't know if it was put into the calculation. I can wait till you guys are done talking. I didn't see it put into the calculations and I don't know if it was because it's a wash or if it's because of, or it just wasn't looked at. But is there a difference in the maintenance of if we had just gone with the, the standard approach as opposed to what we're, what we're doing here? And how, and what's the difference in cost estimate?
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. So the, I'll, I'll probably defer a bit to Byron from Opsme on this, but you know, if, if I've missed anything. So there is, there's a cost difference if we go with the business as usual versus operating and maintaining a, a microgrid. And I want to say the first year cost for that is 65,000 in that range, and then it escalates up from that point at 3% per year. And in the slide that I showed where the, the cost savings would be achieved includes all of that. So even with the business as usual and with the operating cost of the microgrid, there still will be savings associated with that.
Thank you. That was exactly the answer I was hoping to hear.
Thanks. Um, and, and I do want to, though, and I'll go to Councilmember Taylor, because I do think it's an important point, there are projections of savings and to the future of which we don't really know, right? What we do know is the city at some point needs to write essentially a $6 million check in today's dollars right now. And the idea and the thought is that we will recover that, but that's not guaranteed. And, and so this is, this is new technology. This is something different. Everyone isn't doing this. And, and that because those, those savings, you, you know, they're not, they're not certain. There is some uncertainty there. And, and so I do want to credit the council or certainly the council members who have led this effort, which again, it is not me, in wanting the city to go out in, in this way. And like I say, lean forward and into this, to this technology. It is, it is a risk. So, but with that, I'll, I'll go to, to Councilmember Taylor and, and let her structure, structure a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would like to make a motion that in accordance with the California Government Code, Section 4217.10 to 4217.18, which authorized the city council to enter into an energy service agreement for the implementation of energy related improvements if the city council finds that it is the best entrance of the city. I move that the city council make the finding this evening that the key financial terms of the energy services agreement presented at this evening's meeting are in the best entrance of the city because of the anticipated costs to the city for electrical energy services provided by the project will be less than the anticipated marginal costs to the city of the electrical and other energy that would have been consumed by the city in the absence of the proposed project. And that the Menlo Park Community Campus Project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA under section 15302 as a SEQA Class II project because the project consolidates the senior center, youth center, community center, and library facilities, which previously existed as separate buildings on or near the project site into a single building, including construction of a new pool to replace the existing pool to serve sustainable, substantially the same purpose, thereby exempting the project from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to the state SEQA guidelines and triggering no exceptions to such exemption.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
And I, I, based on Councilmember Taylor's direction, I think the, the addition to the proposed motion is that we would then continue approval of the resolution to a date certain of December 14, 2021. And Councilmember Taylor, if you'd entertain that addition to your motion.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
I will second the motion.
Um, and just, and so this is the next council meeting, right? I wish this isn't currently on the schedule, right? So this will, this will have to be added to, to that. Okay. So we got it first in a second.
Thank you. So I have a first by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by Vice Mayor Nash, that the city council makes the following findings. The key financial terms of the energy services agreement presented at this evening's meeting are in the best interest of the city because the anticipated cost to the city for electrical services provided by the project will be less than the anticipated marginal cost to the city of electrical and other energy that would have been consumed by the city in the absence of the proposed project. And the Menlo Park Community Campus Project is exempt from requirements of SEQA under section 15302 as a SEQA Class II project because the project consolidates the senior center, youth center, community center, my library facilities, which previously existed as separate buildings on or near the project site into a single building, including construction of a new pool to replace the existing pool to serve substantially the same purpose, thereby exempting the project from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guidelines and triggering no exemptions to such, no exceptions to such exemption and to continue resolution number 6693 to the December 14, 2021 city council meeting. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Council. And, and then for me, so what happens next and who does it? Just so I'm, I'm clear on like what, or we're all clear, what are the action items? And who has to do them to get this teed up for, for next week?
For, for this, for the microgrid item?
Yeah.
We will bring back a finalized agreement after negotiations are completed this week. The resolution approving the agreement, I, I think we will probably just place on the consent calendar and it will be approved on consent.
Okay.
If the council chooses to approve it.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, we're gonna take a, we'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll take a five minute break. We'll do it, we'll take a five minute break.
Oh, I think we're.
Oh, there she goes.
Yes, so again, confirming we are on item K two. Which is consider the planning commission's recommendation to approve. Specific plan amendments and an amendment to the development agreement for a project at thirteen hundred El Camino Real. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karina and Karina, I'll go ahead and display the slideshow.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Karina Sameyer, acting principal planner, and I'll give a short overview of the Springline project. So the project is located at thirteen hundred El Camino Real. Next slide, please. As some background, it's located on the east side of El Camino between Oak Grove Avenue and Glenwood Avenue. It was previously called Station thirteen hundred, and it's a mixed use development consisting of office, residential, and community serving uses. On a six point four acre site. It was approved by the city council in twenty seventeen. With a floor area ratio of one point five. Next slide, please. On November twenty second, twenty twenty one, the planning commission approved a use permit revision for the project. This covered hazardous materials for an emergency backup generator, expanded outdoor seating. And onsite and offsite consumption of alcohol. The planning commission also conditionally approved an architectural control revision. This increase. This increases the gross floor area up to approximately nine thousand square feet with an FAR of one point five three. And reconfigures the primary residential entry at Oak Grove Avenue and Garwood Avenue. The planning commission action. The appeal period for the planning commission actions ended tonight and staff has not received an appeal letter. And next slide, please. So the entitlements before the council tonight are a specific plan amendment and a development agreement amendment. A specific plan amendment would increase the maximum public benefit bonus level FAR from one point five to one point five five. In the ECR Northeast Residential District of the specific plan under certain circumstances. This would apply to projects approved at the bonus level that include both residential and community serving uses. And it would require the planning commission to make a finding that additions during construction are necessary or desirable to address deficiencies identified. After construction of the structure or structures is substantially complete. The applicant is also requesting a development agreement amendment for the applicant to secure vested rights. And for the city to secure public benefit, in this case, payment of three hundred thousand dollars to complete a quiet zone study. And related projects. If the. If there is, if there are funds left over after the quiet zone study or related projects. Those would go to the downtown public amenity fund, which was mistakenly identified as the downtown amenity fund in the staff report and attachments. So if this is approved, staff will update the appropriate documents after the hearing. Next slide, please. So staff is recommending that the council adopt an ordinance amending the specific plan and adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement amendment. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is Springline gonna make a presentation?
I might defer to our city attorney on process. Should we open it up to the next presentation by Springline or should we go to public comment first?
You can take a presentation by the applicant and then go to public comment if I would defer to the mayor's preference.
Yeah, that works for me.
Great, thank you so much. And for our members of Springland, I will be bringing up your presentation shortly. Cyrus, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Perfect. My apologies. Am I controlling this or should I just?
You can just cue me to next slide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Karina Sameyer, acting principal planner, and I'll give a short overview of the Springline project. So the project is located at thirteen hundred El Camino Real.
Next slide, please. As some background, it's located on the east side of El Camino between Oak Grove Avenue and Glenwood Avenue. It was previously called Station thirteen hundred, and it's a mixed use development consisting of office, residential, and community serving uses. On a six point four acre site. It was approved by the city council in twenty seventeen. With a floor area ratio of one point five. Next slide, please. On November twenty second, twenty twenty one, the planning commission approved a use permit revision for the project. This covered hazardous materials for an emergency backup generator, expanded outdoor seating. And onsite and offsite consumption of alcohol. The planning commission also conditionally approved an architectural control revision. This increase. This increases the gross floor area up to approximately nine thousand square feet with an FAR of one point five three. And reconfigures the primary residential entry at Oak Grove Avenue and Garwood Avenue. The planning commission action. The appeal period for the planning commission actions ended tonight and staff has not received an appeal letter. And next slide, please. So the entitlements before the council tonight are a specific plan amendment and a development agreement amendment. A specific plan amendment would increase the maximum public benefit bonus level FAR from one point five to one point five five. In the ECR Northeast Residential District of the specific plan under certain circumstances. This would apply to projects approved at the bonus level that include both residential and community serving uses. And it would require the planning commission to make a finding that additions during construction are necessary or desirable to address deficiencies identified. After construction of the structure or structures is substantially complete. The applicant is also requesting a development agreement amendment for the applicant to secure vested rights. And for the city to secure public benefit, in this case, payment of three hundred thousand dollars to complete a quiet zone study. And related projects. If the. If there is, if there are funds left over after the quiet zone study or related projects. Those would go to the downtown public amenity fund, which was mistakenly identified as the downtown amenity fund in the staff report and attachments. So if this is approved, staff will update the appropriate documents after the hearing. Next slide, please. So staff is recommending that the council adopt an ordinance amending the specific plan and adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement amendment. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is Springline gonna make a presentation?
I might defer to our city attorney on process. Should we open it up to the next presentation by Springline or should we go to public comment first?
You can take a presentation by the applicant and then go to public comment if I would defer to the mayor's preference.
Yeah, that works for me.
Great, thank you so much. And for our members of Springland, I will be bringing up your presentation shortly. Cyrus, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Perfect. My apologies. Am I controlling this or should I just?
You can just cue me to next slide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for taking the time to. Hear this agenda item. This process has been about a year and a half in the works and I really do appreciate staff and. Planning commission and city council members' time. We've had an extensive amount of discussions around this topic that pertains to the Springline project and the modifications of the project that. We assessed after we took over the project following the onset of the pandemic and so I'll keep the presentation very short, being cognizant of. Of the late hour as well, if you could kindly proceed with the presentation. Sir, next slide, please.
So under city council actions needed slide, did you want to continue or next slide?
Sorry, I think there may be a connection issue on my end. This is great. So. Following on from Ms. Sanders' presentation, we're looking for city council to. Vote on two specific items, the adoption of a specific plan amendment, which really addresses the. Modifications primarily in the subterranean space of the existing parking structure. And then the associated development agreement amendment to account for that same additional square footage to address these backup house and otherwise. Functional shortcomings or missing elements of the project at this point. If we could please go to the next slide. To briefly summarize the modifications that were being pursued and not all of these. Are included in today's two actions, but just a summary of the items that were presented to the planning commission. And that we've worked, we've been working through with staff for quite some time now. The residential entry to the, the entry to the residential buildings, excuse me, at the corner of Grove and Garwood was not optimized for ADA access and so. Redesigning the actual entry sequence to allow for ADA access into the primary entrance. The ancillary changes to the basement levels primarily focused on operational needs such as secured lobbies, trash room, storage, and so on, all. Seeking to serve the proposed retail community service uses that are. Programmed for the ground floor of all three buildings. And then additional TDM focused amenities such as bike parking and expanded locker rooms. To again offset the reduction of parking that these changes are also bringing forward. There's a very small amount of square footage, about four hundred square feet. Split between the two office buildings on the second floor of the office buildings that did not previously take into account how the. Floors would actually get accessed off the main core. And then finally, as it related to the. Proposed retail tenants, there's an ABC requirement at the state level where we're pursuing a variety of. Beverage or liquor licenses to permit alcohol sales at the restaurants and market and so on that we're in discussions with. And that's requiring us to define the outdoor seating of the associated restaurants. Where alcohol sales would be permitted, and these are primarily within our property along the plaza area. And finally, there is an existing generator that was previously proved by building and fire and planning for that matter. The change that's being requested is an actual technical item which is to do with the diesel use permit itself. For what's already been built and the entire life safety system of the project is dependent on this generator. And I would add that Bay Area or quality management permit is approved and already in hand. So this was just a technicality of what was missed in the original approvals. With that, if we could please go to the next line. The green areas really highlight where these changes are isolated and you can see that they're primarily in board and certainly below grade. With the exception of the residential entry sequence there. If we can go to the next slide. This is just a rendering of the proposed change. There really is no change to the overall aesthetic, simply adding the ramp that you can see there on the. On the left hand side to allow for the ADA access. Next slide, please. And this just so shows the expanded back of house spaces and support spaces in the basement levels. The areas in red were previously approved. The blue or purple hue is what's being expanded. For the most part. Next slide, please. From a technical standpoint, the way we sought to allow for these changes since. These areas despite not adding any net new square footage to the project were considered additional FAR was through a modification of the. FAR limit that was previously in place. By adding point zero five FAR, which would amount to about, which would allow us to seek up to fourteen thousand feet, but we're only requesting the nine thousand feet and that's all that we actually need. Here. If we could please go to the next one. As it relates to the topic of the development agreement itself and the public benefit associated with these modifications and the. Bonus floor area of roughly nine thousand square feet. There was discussion about during the planning commission about the application of these funds towards the quiet zone study. I'd like to just flag that we started this process almost eighteen months ago. And at that time, city council had not yet identified the feasibility study for the quiet zone as a council priority and had not allocated. The seventy five thousand dollars for the feasibility study and so as we sought to. Receive and solicit community input. We understood that this was a priority for the city and for the neighbors. And so that's why we proposed this and since then have had several conversations about. The more appropriate avenue of applying the funds towards the. Downtown Community Amenity Fund as opposed to specifically earmarking it for quiet zone work since the quiet zone feasibility study has now been funded. And we understand that the funding that's been set aside is sufficient and so. The intention was simply to identify a benefit or a use of those funds that would. Be considered a public benefit, but to that end, the applicant is agnostic and would defer to city council on your preference. If we could please go to the next one. And the next one. And I did want to briefly touch on something that came up earlier in. Discussion about the no left turn onto Garwood and the question as to what point. We believe would be an appropriate time to check back in with city council with respect to the efficacy of the change that's being proposed. The concerns or questions or comments that were made were were spot on and what I would suggest is. For one, the proposed modification to Oak Grove and Garwood and that no left turn really is not. A change being driven as a result of our, as a result of our project. In fact. That turn area was never something that was evaluated as a, as a concern or an impact, but. To the extent that occupancy at Springline would help evaluate the efficacy of the solution that's put in place. Our suggestion would be to have us work with. Staff and to notify staff at what point we have. Majority occupancy in the retail. Residential and office components because all three are going to drive different levels of transit and at different times and so that will give us a full picture. In terms of where the project stands at the moment, we have received conditional TCO on the south office building. Are hoping to receive conditional TCO on the north office building here shortly. And the residential should be complete by May timeframe if the approvals that we're seeking are received or granted. To that end, if we look at then the retail build out, I would assume that by Q one. Of twenty three would be an appropriate time whereby we have true. And I say this optimistically, but true full occupancy in all three portions of the building of the project, excuse me. Because that would give us at least six months to seven months of lease up for the residential units. And allow for the build out of all the retail spaces as well, which. Are again contingent on these changes that we're seeking now. With that, I want to thank you and open it up for questions or to the extent we go to public comment, we're available for questions thereafter. Thank you for the presentation.
We'll. Open the public hearing and have the city for a call.
There there really is no change to the overall aesthetic, uh simply adding the ramp that you can see there on the on the left-hand side uh to allow for the ADA access. Next slide, please. Uh and this just so shows the expanded uh back-of-house spaces and and support spaces in the basement levels. Uh the areas in red were were previously approved. Uh the blue or purple hue is is what's being expanded um for for the most part. Next slide, please. From a technical standpoint, the the way we sought to allow for these changes since these areas despite not adding any net new square footage to the project were considered additional FAR was uh through a modification of the um FAR limit uh that was previously in place by adding point zero five FAR. Uh which would amount to about uh which would allow us to to seek up to fourteen thousand feet. But but we're only requesting the nine thousand feet and that's all that we actually need uh here. If we could please go to the next one. A- as it relates to the topic of the development agreement itself and the public benefit associated with these modifications and the uh bonus floor area uh of roughly nine thousand square feet. Um there was discussion about during the planning commission about the application of these funds towards the quiet zone study. Um I'd like to just flag that we started this process almost eighteen months ago. Uh and a- at that time, city council had not yet identified uh the feasibility study for the quiet zone as a council priority and had not allocated the seventy-five thousand dollars for the feasibility study. And so as we sought to uh receive and solicit uh community input, we understood that this was a priority for the city and for the neighbors. Uh and so that's why we had proposed this and and since then have had uh several uh conversations about uh the more appropriate avenue of applying the uh funds towards the um downtown community amenity fund uh as opposed to specifically earmarking it for uh quiet zone work since the quiet zone feasibility study has now been funded. Um and we understand that the the funding that's been set aside is sufficient. And so the intention was simply to identify a benefit uh or a use of those funds that that would be considered a public benefit. Uh but to that end, the applicant is agnostic and and would defer to city council on your preference. Uh if we could please go to the next one. Uh and the next one. Uh a- and I did want to briefly touch on something that came up earlier in um the discussion about the uh no left turn uh onto Garwood and the question uh as to what point uh we believe would be an appropriate time to check back in with uh city council with respect to the efficacy of the uh change that's being proposed. Um the the concerns or or questions or comments that were made uh were were spot on. And and what I would suggest is, uh for one, the the proposed modification to Oak Grove and Garwood and that no left turn really is not a change being driven as a result of our part, as a a result of our project. In fact, um that turn area was never something that was evaluated as a as a concern or or an impact. But um to the extent that occupancy at Spring Line would help evaluate the efficacy of of the solution that's put in place, um our suggestion would be to uh have us work with uh staff uh and to notify staff a- at what point we have majority occupancy in the retail uh residential and and office components. Because all three are going to drive different levels of uh of tran- of transit uh in at different times. And so that will give us a full picture. Um in terms of where the project stands at the moment, we have received conditional TCO on the south office building. Are hoping to receive conditional TCO on the north office building here shortly. And the residential should be complete by May timeframe if the approvals that we're seeking uh are are received or granted. Uh to to that end, if we look at then the retail build-out, uh I I would assume that by Q1 of twenty-three would be an appropriate time whereby we have true, and I say this optimistically, but true full occupancy in all three portions of the building because uh of the project, excuse me. Because that would give us at least six months uh to to seven months of of lease-up for the residential units. Um and uh allow for the build-out of all the retail uh spaces as well, which um are again contingent on on these changes that we're seeking now. Uh with that, uh I want to thank you and and open it up for uh questions or to the extent we go to public comment, we're we're available for questions thereafter.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Um we'll um open the public hearing uh and have the city for call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item K two, consider the planning commission's recommendation to approve specific plan amendments and an amendment to the development agreement for a project at thirteen hundred El Camino. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Brittany Baxter.
Hi, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Um fantastic, thank you. Brittany Baxter, District Three resident, actually a pretty close neighbor to this project. So really excited to have um some new neighbors and some new resources in the community. Um thinking back to the earlier discussion and um kind of this public benefit item up, I was wondering if there's an opportunity to use um some of those funds to fund some street improvements? So we've been talking a lot about school safety, general safety on the streets um and the area around this project. And I just would wonder if there's an ability to use it um for something like bike lanes or maybe sidewalk improvements, things like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Fran Bean.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening on the thirteen hundred El Camino Real Spring Line project amendments. We participated in the planning commission review on November twenty-second, encouraging the planning commission to approve the architectural control revision for compliance with specific plan standards and guidelines to approve the use permit for hazardous materials and expanded seating, to recommend that council adopt an ordinance amending the specific plan to increase the maximum public benefit bonus level floor area ratio. And finally, to recommend that city council adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement amendment. Um just as background, the El Camino Real Downtown specific plan was adopted approximately ten years ago based on studies of market demand, opportunities, sites, and assessment of the development potential of each property within transit-oriented El Camino Real in downtown. It was intended to establish a framework for private and public improvements on El Camino Real. And as a framework, the plan encourages community-oriented development, but with the opportunity for review or project-specific modification to optimize the outcome. We believe that tonight's requests are that optimization of a currently approved project as well as a recognition of safety enhancements and market shifts. The community looks forward to the revitalization of El Camino Real and certainly Spring Line as a mixed-use development project will address this long-awaited need. Uh we want to thank you for your consideration this evening. And we encourage your approval as recommended by the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item K two. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Corcoran. Um so I will close the public hearing and bring it back uh to the council for comments, questions, discussion. Is there someone who wants to? Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. And thank you to staff and to Cyrus for the excellent presentations. And just said, what an excellent project um coming forward that should really help revitalize downtown, bringing lots of new residents and also new businesses and new employees during the day. So it's really exciting to look forward to that. And um I also want to disclose that I've met with Cyrus and the Spring Line um team several times, including um council member Wilson and I met with them this morning. And so I actually um am really excited about the project and fully support the um what needs to um the amendments to the downtown specific plan. The one um piece that I would like to see is, since we do now have the full funding for the quiet zone evaluation study, and we've been reassured back in June that the funding was enough for not just the two grade, the two crossings, but also for all four crossings, that the seventy-five thousand dollars would be enough. I would like to see the funds put into the downtown amenities fund for use in downtown. We've heard many, many discussions, comments about how much uh the downtown can use revitalization. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to use the monies in the downtown amenity fund and also get some more um monies into it. And that the what I would ask is that the monies go to the downtown amenity fund and that we work really hard to get them spent as improving downtown and revitalizing it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Um thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, for your comments. And I want to echo uh my support of the amendment to maximize the the project. And hearing about um alcohol permits makes me excited that there's going to be some fun things going on for adults and hopefully for children too, but not the alcohol um at this project. Um I regarding the um three hundred thousand dollars and kind of where to put it, um I actually have some questions for staff regarding the downtown, uh the public amenity fund. I'm not quite sure what we're supposed to call it, um but the fund. And kind of, um I was looking through the downtown specific plan today, trying to get more information about, is there a list of items, um what makes up, like what's the current balance of the downtown amenity fund? I I want to understand more. I um to just put out there, I'm conflicted. Uh I I think it's wonderful that we funded the study for the for the quiet zone. Um and I I feel confident that if it were to go, you know, a little over budget, that we would find money to complete the study so that it is robust and it addresses a lot of the questions and concerns. Um I know the council is interested in the quiet zone. We haven't committed to actually doing the quiet zone yet. So I see um the argument of like not putting money towards something that we haven't as a council prioritized yet. That being said, um you know, I I want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity to um, you know, signal to the community that the quiet zone is something and that the this applicant has, you know, identified that as a potential amenity. Um so I don't know if there's, one idea I had was to um, again, I don't know if we, I guess it's going back to staff. Do we have a list? And if we have a list, um would it be possible to include a quiet zone in the downtown amenity fund? And kind of what are the parameters of the downtown amenity fund? And and then I have some other questions just about um potential future funding of the quiet zone as as well.
I'll start, but uh I'll look to my colleagues to help me. So I think what we have in the fund is about two point one million dollars based on the contribution from Spring Line and the three hundred would bring it to two point four million. I don't believe there's an actual list. I think there were some ideas and suggestions when the when the uh work was being done on the downtown specific plan. But I don't think there's uh in comparison with the community amenities list, there is not a comparable list for downtown uh public amenities.
Is there an intention to develop a list? Or is it, how how then is that fund? Do we determine what is appropriate to be spent from that fund? And is there anything precluding us in the future from using the downtown amenity fund to potentially fund quiet zone activity of the council at that time? And I know that there's a great, first of all, I just want to say, I love downtown. I want our downtown to be wonderful. I want it to be clean and attractive. And I know there's a lot of work to be done there. So I'm not committing us to, I'm not trying to take money away from any improvements that need to be made downtown. I just want to see if if um if there's any precluding using money for the downtown amenity fund for the quiet zone, if if that was something that was needed in the future.
I I don't believe so. I think the council has very broad discretion with respect to the community public amenities fund.
Okay. Um yeah, like like I said, um you know, the quiet zone is obviously something very near, literally near and dear um to residents in in my district. And I know um I know Vice Mayor Nash has commented that she hears uh the train from her house. And it was funny, as uh the applicant was making his presentation, the train was was blaring by. It was almost like a uh exclamation point on this whole issue. Um so um I just, I I don't want to, I I I'm big into process precedent and procedure. And I I want to do the right thing of how we take this money from Spring Line and put it kind of in the right bucket. But I also um don't want to preclude the money from being spent on the quiet zone. If if that's the 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 will of the council in the future, so. Um but it sounds like that would be a possibility. Um and then and then my other um questions more about the quiet zone is kind of veering into a slightly different topic was um does staff, I mean, I know we're we're not even starting the feasibility study yet, but does staff staff have any thoughts on where potential funding could come from for the quiet zone? And I know three hundred thousand would be like a drop in the bucket anyway. So any, any thoughts about that?
I think it will be helpful to understand the full financial impact of the quiet zone study and the improvements that would be required. So our recommendations would vary on whether the total cost is five hundred thousand dollars versus five million dollars, just just to show extremes. So I think we'd really want to have more information about the total costs of the improvements.
Okay. Um so I mean, I would feel comfortable, just so my colleagues know. Um because because I do feel like it's kind of giving up a little bit of like some District Three, you know, earmarked money for the quiet zone to put into the downtown amenity fund, although that's also downtown is also in District Three. Um but if we do move it into the downtown or public benefit fund or whatever we want to call it, that we put in the motion that that money could, there's nothing preventing that money from being used on future quiet zone. Because anyone that sat at Cafe Veroni, who we could argue is downtown, um knows that, you know, it's it would be a public benefit for anyone downtown to have a fight. And I know there's, whether the station horn is going to be able to not be blared or whatever, but there is a an argument to be made that uh the railroad is downtown and and could be included. So that that's where I'm coming from. So thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
I want to use the money for Sharon Park. Just kidding. I just thought it'd be funny. Um no, I um I'll just be brief. I so Vice Vice Mayor Nash, obviously, I get really excited when we talk about putting money toward the downtown and very much want to do that. Uh but what I'm about to say probably will shock you then. I actually um from my an accounting perspective, because I know uh in talking with so first off, in talking to Atherton City Council members, they just are always like the the number one biggest impact thing I'm repeatedly told is doing this quiet zone. Like they're just, they say the resident impact is just huge uh in terms of satisfaction. And um I think it would be. I don't know if we're going to end up doing it, right? That's the question, like, will we end up doing it when the cost comes in? Uh but because I also uh have a belief that it's always hard to get money for your project when there's no money already allocated toward it. It's like you're starting from scratch and trying to build up for it. In this circumstance, what I'd probably be inclined to do would be to say, why don't we put the money aside in the quiet zone fund? But have it must have its market and say, if it's not going to be used for a quiet zone, if council doesn't approve it in a certain amount of time, we can go and take it and move it into the amenities fund for for the downtown amenities fund for an appropriate project. That way, at least we have it here in a quiet zone fund to begin with. And if and if the project, I I because I tend to, this is what I believe. As much as I want the downtown uh downtown projects to begin, I don't think they're going to begin robustly within a six-month time period or an eight-month time period. I think we're going to need to do some comprehensive planning now about what we're doing down there. And I think that probably these, we'll probably get the study for the quiet zone back before we actually start really spending money on downtown. So we'll have a decision made. Uh so uh so for me, it's, why don't we keep them segregate, keep them segregated? You don't, or you think or no? Yeah, so.
I mean, I could go, I think I've stated, um I mean, I I've been thinking about this a lot and that part of earlier today, I was kind of thinking along those lines. And then I was trying to be, you know, trying to thread a needle here on, you know. But um I I I could go either way.
That so I, so for me, it's like, I think eventually what will end up happening is this. But if we decide to go forward with both, then we might, and we might, then we'll probably wish that we had kept them separate to begin with. So unless you guys have a con- a contrarian point of view on that, I'm I'm open to hearing it. But for me, it's like, I I I I I actually think that, and I do think that telling telling those who care about this project that we put three hundred set aside for it, will give them some peace of mind that we actually are very serious about moving forward with the quiet zone project, should it be deemed feasible. So.
Vice Mayor Nash and then and then the city manager.
I I was going to suggest if that's the direction of the council, that rather than creating yet another special revenue fund, that we create a capital project and we dedicate this three hundred thousand dollars to to the revenue for the capital project and a three hundred thousand dollar budget for the capital project, which won't be spent without council authorization.
That's fine. That works for me. That would same thing. I just, all I care about is the money is going to come in from them. We set it aside. We hold it there until the time the council says we don't, we're not moving forward with this project based on the feasibility study. But with the caveat that we all have the understanding that if we're not, if we end up not using it there, it's flowing into what we're doing into the downtown.
So I have a slightly different view, um of course. Um first of all, let me state that um District Four, well, citywide and also District Four residents live on the train track, will be affected by the quiet zone. It's not that in any way I do not want a quiet zone. I think that if it looks feasible, that's fantastic. We need to look at the, is it feasible? And we need to look at the costs of it. Um so I think it's premature to try and fund something when we know that we've got a significant need downtown. I think the exact argument that um you made to, that why we shouldn't put it downtown, that it won't be started right away, is actually the argument that I would say, why we shouldn't be putting it into the um in toward the um quiet zone. And I would actually say that it um it makes sense to expand what could be used for as part of the downtown for the quiet zone potentially. Um but I just, um I would like to have a very um just a really um good view into the evaluation and have it be very objective rather than have a thumb on the scale where we've already got money there. It doesn't mean that I'm not fully in support of it. If it looks like it's going forward, it just, to me, doesn't make sense to start um putting money into something when um at this point and start yet another fund and another CIP project. I, you know, if in, once the evaluation's done, absolutely, let's do it. But just why go through the administrative effort to do that now when we do have a repository for it? I also want to point out that in the downtown specific plan, Chapter G implementation, there actually are suggestions for what would be used for the, um they're calling it the public amenity fund. But it's essentially improve pedestrian bicycle amenities and overall street character downtown and station area, improve and leverage existing downtown public public parking plazas. Um, so although we also have the parking plaza, we have different monies that I think would go to the parking plazas. So I actually would not, um, move it in that direction as much. But I think there's a lot that could be done downtown to improve pedestrian and bicycle amenities and to just the character of the downtown and station area. And that also could encompass quiet zones if that's where we decide we want to spend the money.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Combs. Uh, Vice Mayor Ash, totally respectful for where you're coming from. The one thing I want to say is I wasn't, I didn't want to, I wasn't trying to give the impression that, um, because we don't know what we're doing with the money yet, we wouldn't just spend it on downtown. What I, what I meant, uh, was that we just basically had time. Um, and the one thing I'd say is that, though, that there is a difference in the, in, in whether or not a project is becoming more feasible when you put, set aside money toward it. And an example would be like Sharon Road. Like, once we had money allocated, say in our CIP, the project became more feasible that it would actually happen over time because we had a head start. An example of a project where, uh, you know, and the same thing I think is somewhat true with respect to the bike under crossing. The project started to become more feasible, once we actually had the negotiated agreement with Stanford, that there'd be money toward it. There's something about planning to do a project and then actually having money set aside to do that project. And you're right, it is a thumb on the scale. There's a little thumb on the scale of whether or not it's actually going to happen. Uh, so I guess the truth is I'm ready to put a little bit of a thumb on the scale. If a feasibility study comes back and it's just totally not doable, my thumb is going to come off that scale really fast. And it's so hard for me right now. You must know how hard it is for me right now, being making this argument, because I care so much about improving our downtown. I want to start that work. Uh, but I almost feel like, imagine if, uh, imagine if 20 years ago, they had started setting aside money for that bike under cross project. And they weren't sure they were going to get it. They, they didn't have, they hadn't even agreed to do, you know, grade separations. They knew at some point they, that if that was coming and they started to put money aside for that, for that tunnel, we'd be a lot further along than we are right now. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from it. Uh, but that being said, if, if, uh, if my argument doesn't hold the day and we're putting money toward downtown, I'm going to call it a victory anyway. So.
I'd love to ask the city manager, what is the administrative costs? Is, uh, is it something to be concerned about or not, given our staffing at this point?
To, to put together a capital project or?
To just, what is your, yes, to, um, create another CIP project to carry that along? Any, what are your comments as far as?
I think it's fairly modest. I, let me put it to you this way. I would much prefer to keep, to create a capital project than a special revenue fund, which was the other alternative. Although if, if you don't, if the council doesn't want to do that, I mean, I think putting it in the public amenities fund is also a good option.
So, um, I'm supportive of, of, you know, creating a CIP and putting the $300,000 at the CIP for, for the, the quiet zone and, and putting the 300,000, uh, towards, uh, you know, towards that. I, I, I think our, their argument is, is, um, is, is valid. I, I, I think it would be, I mean, with downtown again, and I was the guy just a week ago saying, you're going to hear from us, we're going to be doing stuff in downtown. But, but it's still like, what is that first step, um, for downtown is something we still haven't quite, um, landed on yet. Uh, like, like, is it, is it, is it Hardscape? You, you know, what is it? What does that project look like? And so, and, and I do want to be in some degree responsive. I, I think in my time on council, I don't know if, if there is an idea that has garnered more public support than the idea of, of a quiet zone. And so, um, but, and so, you know, I, in, in that way, I think, and for those reasons, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of, of, uh, of, um, you know, setting aside the money specifically for, for, uh, this, this project. I, I think to the point and, and, and to what, uh, the, uh, the city manager said, the price estimates we've gotten on what this have been wide ranging, like, right? I, I know that there is the Atherton figure that gets put out there, even, uh, some of the figures I've gotten from some residents in Felton Gables. And then you talk to other people and they're like, no, that, that's not a real figure add another zero. Um, and so, but, but it's sort of minimal cost, I, I think, to show that this is, is something that, that we appreciate that has generated a lot of support from, from the public and it's, is, you know, a core quality of life issue, um, for, for those obviously living closest to the tracks, but for, you know, some miles away from the track again, like I, I hear the train, um, horns from, from, from my house and, and obviously I'm, um, you know, at, at least I'm all the way from, 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 from the tracks. I would say I do want to respond to the one public comment we had about, um, uh, funds for, uh, for, for bike lanes and sidewalk improvements. And I just wanted to encourage you to, um, for the bike lanes, uh, that you think should be created and for the sidewalks that need to be improved, please email us. It's a possibility that those are already part of a CIP and have been identified. And so, um, and so, yes, but, but that, that is very important and, and, and definitely email us to give us some sense of the exact sort of places where you think the bike lanes need to be and, and where, certainly where the sidewalk, uh, needs to be improved. Um, uh, council member Mueller.
Yeah, I will say to Vice Mayor Nash and, and also a fair warning to all council that if we find a project that costs 2.4 million dollars in the downtown that I'm excited about, and this project seems to be going nowhere, I know where I'm coming from the money. Is that fair?
Honestly, that's exactly, to me, if we put it in one fund, then it's available. And we also say that the quiet zone, I mean, it's honestly six of one, half a dozen of another. Um, I guess one of my concerns is just getting people too excited about the real possibility, the feasibility of the quiet zones. Having sat on, um, in prior years on the rail committee, um, and the, um, on the Cal train, um, the San Mateo County, actually, I guess it went all the way to Gilroy. So all of the Cal train, um, the local policymakers group committee, there are, and perhaps, um, Mr. Murphy knows, um, exactly, but there are regulations where the trains have to be blaring their horns by the train station, regardless of whether you have a quiet zone or not. So that's why I'm, um, less optimistic that we will be able to really, um, impact a major change, um, like Atherton was able to do, because we do have the train station right by our major arteries. And, um, I'm, I in no way want to sound not excited and supportive of quiet zones. If we can do it, it would be life changing. But I really am just, I don't want to get too excited about it. And I also don't want to, um, throw good money after bad money if it really is not feasible. So I think it's just a matter of really being careful that we're not overextending ourselves beyond what the $75,000 right now has been allocated. If we need more to complete it, you know, costs are going up. I'm not against that, but I just want to really do this very judiciously and objectively. Um, because there's a tremendous amount of excitement. We obviously all heard from, uh, Mr. De Joyla, um, in Atherton, the mayor, that this was the, you know, best thing that they've done for quality of life for their residents. Obviously that would be great if we could do it for Menlo Park. It's just, um,
Yeah, I totally get it. I totally get it. And we'll happen, we'll be transparent, right? I mean, the one thing about doing it this way is that if we decide that we're not, we're going to take the money out of the 300,000 out of the project, it'll be transparent that basically the council's saying, there's problems. So, and we didn't close our station. We can't close our station like they did.
Um, so, uh, I think we've all established, we like quiet zones and we like the downtown. Um, I do have kind of a policy precedeny kind of question, because, um, I'm trying to understand for the downtown specific plan, if, if there's more developments that come, um, and a developer has a development agreement and they have, you know, additional amount of development rights and they have to pay us money, um, is the default for them to pay into the, whatever we're calling this one, the public amenities fund? Or they can propose or be lobbied for something for a different, uh, benefit? Or, or they're lit, like what, what is the process, a procedure for future developments that have development agreements where there's a cash payment? Because, you know, we're doing the housing element now, we have, you know, there's going to, this isn't going to be our only thing. And I just want us to make sure we're thinking, um, policy level. And so there's no unintended consequences, um, of this.
Uh, so I, I would need to go back and refresh on the downtown specific plan, but to the best of my recollection, you're not, you're not making any final determinations about, that would reduce the breadth of your discretion in this matter.
I, I guess I'm, I'm asking, what was, when the downtown specific plan was written and there was the establishment of this fund, was the, because I, I know Stanford gave us money for the, for the tunnel, um, but then we have this fund, so is it like an in lieu fund or that? Because there's not a list, like connect Menlo. So I'm just trying to understand what the, the vision was of these development agreements and how this money was going to be handled. So there's an expectation in the community of, of the appropriate time to make, ask, and an expectation on council, if we have our eye, if we know the project's coming and we have our eyes set on something, if it's going into a larger fund, that there's going to be some kind of parameters of what's going to be spent, or if it's kind of a free for all, and, you know, someone can try to get the money for the quiet zone, someone can try to get money for a, a sidewalk or, or whatever. Um, I'm just trying to, and, and maybe the answer is that now and we just resolve tonight as tonight, but it's a question that I definitely want to come back to, um, because I think it's really important that, that we all understand what's going on.
That, that seems very reasonable. I, I would prefer not to try and answer that question tonight, just because I do want to go back and look at the downtown specific plan to make sure we're in concert and, and it's, it was adopted in, I think, 2012. So it's faded a little bit in my memory, but glad to do that and then bring it back at the appropriate time for council to more fully consider and, and how they want to evaluate projects in the future.
Uh, thank you.
Oh, I'll go to councilmember Mueller and I do want a motion from someone after that.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if Vice Mayor Nash was comfortable. The last point I'd make on this item is one of the other reasons that led me to this, and I'm, I'm speeding myself up here because I'm like, great, what are you doing? Is because the, the really, going back to the earlier item, it seems that when you look at who's being impacted by the traffic from this project or the, you know, the increased FAR the most is the neighborhoods that are asking us for this quiet zone. And that's another thing that's weighing in my mind on this project is that the traffic, when we look at, when we look at this project, those neighborhoods that are most impacted are the ones who are coming and asking us for quiet zones. That also weighs in my mind, but I sure would love to grab that money for the downtown. But I just, it seems like the right thing to do.
So I actually think that was a very compelling argument. Um, and I will move that we approve the money, approve the project. I guess the other piece I want, don't want to lose is I think there's been several times right now where the project, the spring line project has sort of gotten caught up with some issues within the city and some of our processes. And we, um, they've been very patient with us and just want to thank them for all of their, um, work and very, they've been working very hard with staff and, um, with council and with, um, residents and just, um, they took over a project and have sort of taken it to the next level. So thank you. And with that, um, I don't know what the changes in the, um, motion.
Councilmember Willison.
Um, can I, I, I didn't know if the amendment, uh, the motion was going to include something about staff coming back about, um, the fund in general and process and stuff.
Well, I was, yes, well, that was going to be my next question was about what changes there were. I know that we, um, if there's any changes to the, um, to the motion as it currently is written, given that we'd want to put it into a CIP fund at this point and not have another special revenue fund. And also then, yes, what is the process do, is coming back to council about the specific plan and the process around the fund part of this motion? Or do we do it separately? Because we certainly don't want to bog down the project with that process.
Well, do you want to?
Yeah.
So, um, let's separately, you can separately direct staff on coming back with some specifics on how to manage the community benefit fund, um, because that's not related to this project. This project is, has negotiated a benefit based on, um, uh, First Amendment to the Development Agreement. So I would take that up separately. Um, as for the motion as it stands, how staff and the city manager and her staff account for use of the public benefit contribution is not a part of the approvals this evening? So what I would suggest is, assuming that everyone is in agreement that you want to move forward with allocating the money to the quiet zone study and implementation as, as, as necessary, then separately direct, um, or you can direct as part of that, that motion, but we're not going to change the motion on the table, but you would add that you want the funding allocated, I'll let you, to a CIP.
Or you can also give us general direction on that tonight. We'll be bringing back a budget update and I think we could incorporate that as part of that project or, uh, study.
But in some, you'd read the motion as drafted.
I would like to move the motion as drafted.
Yes.
What the?
What you just said, second.
The, the vice mayor said, right, you, you moved the motion as, as drafted, right? And, and I, I second it.
Okay. So the motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by Mayor Combs is to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1083, amending the specific plan to increase the maximum public bonus, benefit bonus level for area ratio from 1.50 to 1.55 in the UCR NE dash R district under certain circumstances. And we first reading and introduce ordinance number 1084, approving an amendment to the development agreement for the project sponsor to secure vesting rights and for the city to secure a public benefit. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Willison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, city clerk here. And we'll move to regular business. Under a regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require, um, the city council approval. Um, the first item under regular business has been continued. And so we'll move on to L two. The, the second item under regular business, uh, introduce ordinance number 1081, repelling and replacing sections 2 dot 04 dot 200, advisory boards and commissions, um, 2 dot 04 dot 210, district based electoral system and 2 dot 04 dot 220, establish, um, meant of city council electoral based systems of chapter 2 dot 04 with in title two of the Menlo Park Municipal Code and adopting resolution number 6688, updating city's conflict of interest code to add, uh, the independent redistricting commissioners and alternate commissioners. Um, here to introduce the item is city clerk here.
Thank you, Mayor Combs.
Mayor Combs may ask, is, does anyone have any?
Mayor Combs may ask, is does anyone have any objection to us just to dispensing with the staff report this evening?
I don't. Okay. Um, all right. Sorry, City Clerk Karen, your your time in the light.
More than happy to entertain motion.
All right. Well, let's let's call for public comment.
Even better, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item L two regarding introduction of an ordinance repealing and replacing advisory bodies and commissions and district based electoral systems, establishment of city council electoral base system and adopting a resolution updating the city's conflict of interest code for independent redistricting commissioners and alternate commissioners, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or a cell phone, you may press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item L two. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk Karen. I'll move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor. By Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Mueller to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1081, repealing and replacing sections 2.04.200 advisory bodies and commissions 2.04.2.210 district based electoral system and 2.04.220 establishment of city council electoral base system of chapter 2.04 within title two of the Menlo Park Municipal Code and adopting resolution 6688, updating the city's contract of interest code and to add the independent redistricting commissioners and alternate commissioners. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, City Clerk Karen. We'll move to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask question or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, can you call for a public comment on the informational item?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Any member of the public wishes to speak on info item M one related to city council agenda topics? Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, you press star nine at this time. Final call for public comment on item M one or informational item this evening. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And are there any questions or comments from the dais on M one? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to city manager's report. City Manager Jerome Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I do have a report tonight. I wanted to let you and the public know that in coordination with city attorney, we've discussed the reopening of the 800 block of Santa Cruz Avenue, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce, who are huge advocates for reopening it. And so the city crews will begin the process as early as Thursday with the intention of reopen reopening in the in the next few days. So it's not date certain quite yet, but we do hope by no later than midweek next week and and hopefully much earlier than that, we'll have Santa Cruz Avenue reopened in the 800 block. So before anybody gets concerned, the 600 block will stay closed, which is the Bistro Vita Bon Marche block.
And city manager Jerome Robinson, so then will the parking spots still be blocked with the K rail for, you know, the entirety of that 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 block?
Thank you for asking. Yes, the the crews will be taking appropriate action to try and ensure the safety of those parklets.
Any council questions?
Great. Thank you.
Right. Cool. Okay, then we'll move on to council member reports. Any reports from city council members? I will kick it off. The one report I have is is that it is my understanding that council member Taylor has submitted an application for an open director position on the One Shoreline Board of Directors. It was my intent to send a letter of support on behalf of the council. I don't know who I'm sending that support letter to, but I don't know if we can, if I can get that support just in because it obviously is not agendized item. If I can get that support. But but if it's okay, either I will send it speaking for the council, or I will spend it, send it speaking for myself. But but it is my intention to send a letter of support about that that application. Councilmember Mueller.
I don't think I can vote for it, but I won't object if I see a letter saying it's from the council.
Vice Mayor Nash. Okay, yeah, I'm I'm done. That was my council member report. So so we can move on.
I was hoping that the city manager might mention something about SB nine.
The staff is working again in coordination with the city attorney's office on bringing back staff report in action for council at the meeting of the 14th, which is one week from tonight for consideration by the council with an emphasis on adopting a resolution developing at least beginning objective standards that will apply for SB nine.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I appreciate your support for my application to be the an at large representative on the One Shoreline Board. And this Thursday at C CAG, the selection will be made. And then also there is the San Mateo County Express Lanes Joint Powers of Authority Board Meeting this Friday, December 10th at 9:00 AM. If you're interested in getting an update on the express lanes. And I will have a report out at the next council meeting for the San Francisco Brown Table that I sit on since I was unable to attend their last meeting. Thank you.
You know, the council member reports, council member Willison.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is my very first meeting on the dais with my colleagues, and I just wanted to thank you all for making it a very pleasant and collegial meeting, and I look forward to many more and to staff as well, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. You say that as I'm rolling off of being mayor.
Yeah, it was great. It was. It was truly great to all be together again.
And we missed that council member Taylor.
Very much. Yeah. And I wanted to clarify the reason why I can't vote for council member Taylor because it's not Brown acted. Otherwise, I would. But I won't object to you doing that even without that vote. The the only other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank council member Taylors for her service on the downtown subcommittee. And just alert council and the public that she has rolled off and council member Nash has joined me on it. So Vice Mayor Nash has joined me on it. So thank you all.
All right. Well, I think that is all for council member reports. And so I will adjourn the meeting at 10:24.